All right, we will open up the planning board meeting for. January twenty third, twenty twenty four. This is being conducted in a hybrid manner pursuant to the general laws. If anybody is reporting that is fine, you just need to let us know. Okay. Seven o'clock P M town planners.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Okay, a couple of items to. Discuss. Um, just a quick reminder, we do have a joint meeting with the select board scheduled for next Monday, the twenty ninth. Where the planning board and select board will do an interview candidates for the planning board associate. Member of the. With. And come here's assistance, we submitted a request for a minor scope modification. To the planning assistant grant under that supported the second half of a. Master plan and development and an implementation phase that will be working through. In the first half of this year, essentially shifting from. Open space um. Residential developments by law, our flexible. Presidential Development District. Um by law and subdivision. Regulations looking to line those two shifting from that to zoning diagnostic. The short of it is that we have been authorized. To complete that scope change, so I expect that our Tuesday evenings will see some. Time devoted to that task as we move forward. Uh, speaking of tasks, I've. Reached out to town council for assistance, uh, so that in this. Annual town meetings cycle, we can propose or help to assemble warrant articles. For the acceptance of Fox Legis states, that's a La Corie Drive and Cody Lane. That particular subdivision of the infrastructure appears to be still in good condition, right around. Nineteen ninety nine when collateral was released. On it, we have an ass built plan, Randy and I have yet to do, I'm gonna call it a walkthrough. Um, I prepare uh. Certain recommendations, um, missing pieces that I'm aware of. Aside from I'm gonna call the developers procedural steps and closing out their burden. The ones that I see that are missing are the great easements to the town for the right of way. Um, and any cross-country utility easements, so I think in a similar fashion to what was done. Um, at Robin Road. After they had their as-built survey produced, there was a. There were articles pertaining to. The takings, um, appraisals associated with. Those takings and authorized in the select board to. Uh, initiate those parts of the process. So anyways, let's make a long story short, uh, reached out to town council to begin. The process so they can figure out what's missing, what costs may be associated with it, uh, because we are also up um. For our annual budget submittal uh, process and any costs that I can at least to help them to anticipate um. Want to make sure I submit. What else? Let's see, um. Also coordinating with town council um. On a number of matters, but not the least of which is a circling back to the short-term rental by law. Where we have a few deletions that were noted by the attorney general. As straightforward as I think they are, um, the town attorneys need to modify. Uh, the bylaw language, and I think they're going to resubmit us to the attorney general's office for them to. Uh, acknowledge. Uh, and the other loose item we've talked about in the past is the cell, our wireless communications. Um, by law. Where we have language in there. What does it say? When possible municipal agencies will be allowed to attach communications tennis to a wireless communication tower at the town's expense. And to use it at no cost to the town, provided the town's uses are interfered, et cetera. And I believe that's the same issue that um. Uh, police and fire ran into when looking to recently attach equipment to. Powerway around the corner here has an existing structure. So whatever modification may be necessary to that, I'm looking for a little clarification from town council. So that if maybe we can grab it this spring. That there were another notes. That's funny.
Yeah. And we figured out. Right, that that. Parcel that may be taken. In a tax taking is not sufficient in and of itself.
I did follow up with Carl and Chief Stephenowitz, uh, my inclination at the last landing board meeting was that it was just too small, so. Uh, full some G I S measurements, uh, and while we have. What we call the opportunity to waive certain dimensional requirements, uh, I think the fundamental inadequacy of that particular site. Is not in the spirit of such waivers and some of those waivers are safety related. What they would need, the dimensions would be safety related. Feeding Hills Road right at the town line.
Okay.
Um. Yep, just a, just a small wedge of land happened to be conveniently. Purged for telecommunications purposes, but it's just not the right fit.
So you're saying we have to take into account houses in Agawang, that they're in Agawang?
Yes. And also perhaps a very substantial waiver of. Other dimensional requirements.
Yeah, um, I mean, the one, you know, not that it obviously with tax taking. Um, it becomes easier, but. You know, I, if that is a spot. That seems like a good spot for something like that. And if that's something that they're thinking about. Strike me that the land next to that. Is owned by the Commonwealth. When they bought it for the extension of fifty seven. Which I'm pretty sure we can all agree is no longer. Likely, um, so you know, I do wonder whether. It may not be. It's not, obviously not no cost, but at minimal cost to get some. Extension into that or purchase some of that too.
You raised a good point, um. If we consider the uh, parcel being discussed for taking and then some portion of the state land, it certainly be. Less than what you would acquire on its own by acreage standpoint, it could be a viable situation.
Not that that's gonna go quickly if it's unwelcome better.
I don't, I do not know how quick the alternatives will be implemented and how durable those solutions may be versus a dedicated facility. Uh, I'll raise the, um, the suggestion to Carl and Chief Stephenowitz.
Okay. All right. Now, seven oh five public comment, anybody have anything for the planning board this evening? Hey. Um, seven. Ten P M. Six sixty Cleveland Mallard Highway.
We are in receipt of a briefly worded. Um, but nonetheless, a continuous request. Uh, from Monday thirty P M. Sorry, hi Megan, uh, this is from Jim Boyle owner, the mayor self-storage and the applicant for this project, uh, thank you, we'll be asking for continuance.
All right, what is the. Next agenda report?
Oh. Where there's nothing specific to schedule for that agenda. The time next to six is straight is. Only merely what we had today.
What, where are we in the um? Process for opening up that by law? It's not gonna happen.
It's, it won't happen on the sixth, at the end of February.
Um. All right, so do I hear a motion to continue to? Seven ten P M on February sixth. Dave Spina so moved.
Take a second.
Roll call vote, Michael Doherty, aye.
Dave Spina, aye.
Take a second, aye.
David Sutton, aye.
Jessica Thornton, aye.
Okay. Yeah, this is where I got into trouble in my scheduling. So. Um. All right, so if we go down to discussion items. Um. First of all, there weren't any um. Minutes, right?
I neglected to actually attach things in my household. You know.
So, we can spot that one out.
If you'd like, we may have time to go back to them.
Well, you have to make a good point, um. Okay. So. Uh, under discussion, Sodom Mountain. Uh, that's being. Um.
That's being postponed as well.
Yeah.
They're asking to postpone us to them.
Yep. And we still need to get. Well. Yeah. Okay.
There'll be more information coming out.
Yep, um. All right, let's. Before we dig into this housing production plan, uh, the master plan implementation committee. Um. Second half of the master plan hopefully tight, um. Um. I'm not sure we ever sort of reached a. Uh, decision on that about how it's gonna be. Um. How big it'll be, uh, what? You know, what the constitution of it is gonna be as far as the. Um. I want to say it, where you're, where you're drawing the members from, right? The recommendation was. Three residents. Planning board and select, right? Um. Do we have, is everybody? Well, I guess let's start with this, is everybody? Comfortable with a board of? Five as far as the recommendation. Higher or lower?
I mean, at the master plan, it means when we're talking about this, the thought was it's five, I'll call it, and feel free to correct me if I'm wrong, folks who were there, um. Five core members, if you will, that would probably draw in. One, a better term consultants, you know, other people to help out or whatever has different phases or whatever is going on, so. Based on, I think, you know. Five is, you know, it's, it's certainly a small type group, um. But, you know, definitely at some point, um, you know, size gets unrealty.
Um. And I, I mean, at least in my mind, I think. It's set up as its own standing committee. As an independent. Committee that. Um. Yes, we gotta figure that. I would, I mean, I guess it depends on how it gets, it probably needs to go in through a town meeting, right, to. Are you? You'll figure out how it's set up. I mean, the options being. Its own committee. You subcommittee of planning board. Or subcommittee of something else, maybe, I suppose. Um. And then you have to figure out. How it gets. How the members get chosen. Which, as we know, becomes contentious at times. Uh. So. We have that. Um. I mean, five to me seems like a. Reasonable as, as. I still think about what you do if you're subcommittee, but assuming it's a stand-around committee. They can just have subcommittees and they can, you know, um. Perform, you know, issue-specific committees if they need to and get people involved. Um, that doesn't seem like a problem. Um. You obviously want odd numbers, so five works. Um. Yeah, I don't know, anybody else have thoughts on it? Either number or. Constitution of it or. How it gets. Constituted.
I think if we make it a, it's gonna be totally independent. Takes, takes a lot of pressure off the board to like oversee every minute, but. Self-maintained, you know, then. If we, if the board has any questions, we can bring them and ask them.
But.
Are you gonna draw from the committee that was formed to write the master plan committee? Are you gonna pull from that pool?
Um, I suspect, well, I shouldn't say that, I know. That um, there will be applicants from it, right?
That'd be a logical place to get some from because they've got a lot of experience with it, they've already gone through the debating process. And they seem to be pretty level-headed minded people.
Yep.
And accepted.
I think. For purposes of getting it off the ground, that's probably a good place to start because you, you. You cut down on the learning curve.
Yeah.
Doesn't mean that.
I mean, the process has come a long way that to have a bunch of fresh faces in there have to start all over again.
No, but I think at some point, right? You, you get through a bunch of. Implementing some of the master plan suggestions, there's probably room for have some new faces and new ideas, right, but. You know, it's gonna take some time to get through some of those. Recommendations in the master plan, and so it probably makes sense to have. For, for at least. You know, some of it be drawing from, and there's already two people who put their names, you know, and sort of said they'd be willing to. Are gonna apply for it, so.
From the original master plan committee?
But we can also do it like as a subcommittee of the master plan committee?
Well, the master plan committee is gone, that was a subcommittee of us, right, so that's already gone.
No, what I'm saying, right, what? This committee you're talking about now, if they get, if you have five people. And some other people have, you know, that would like to put input into it. Could you have like a? Subcommittee of that, that committee, I mean.
Yeah, and you could also, we could also change the number at some point, well, whoever is responsible for it can change.
Like in a public hearing, you just have to have a public discussion.
Right? No, no, I mean, and actually, if it's an independent board, you know, anybody could petition to have the number changed, um, so. Um. I just think as a starting point, five seems like a reasonable number. I like the idea that there's more residents than. Board members.
Yeah.
Um.
Well, that committee had such a, such a great mix of everybody. So that's a, that's, that's one of the biggies also.
Yeah, though, I mean, it's, you know. I, I think the people on it made that successful. I think the idea of having a committee that big. Was a bit of a.
That was a challenge.
That was. I think we lucked out, um, because of the quality of the people on that, it worked out. But it wasn't necessarily. Destined to be with a. Committee that big. Uh, but the diversity of the people on that, I think, was a very. Useful. Uh.
You say we go with five and you have a big, a much bigger interest than that. What would be the, the, the length of the process to add more?
That's where my thought was coming in, guys, is we're talking about it like we're still gonna be kind of in control of it. And that's only if we elect to keep it. As a subcommittee of the planning board itself, I would assume if, so. I think based upon the discussion that we're having and that we want to see certain um. People there to, to get this off the ground and we're not exactly sure how. Process is going to move from day one to year twenty, that. Uh, having our finger kind of on it, not as, as in, in a way to tip the scales. But to give it an operating. Kind of guiding hand at this point, I think if we. Start exploring the idea of this being its own independent committee that then has to be implemented by annual town meeting and then who is the appointing? Body at that point, and how does that lengthen the process? And so I just, I feel like if it was a subcommittee under the planning board, we would have. A greater flexibility and ability to um. Make appropriate changes to make sure it goes forward in a working manner.
With the.
And I agree with the number of five.
With the idea that it'll become a independent committee at some point in time, just not off the ground.
Sure, and, and, and if that, you know, we come up. After having it under our control or purview for a couple of years and we say, okay, this is operating as it should, things are happening, it's getting done. We can move it forward with a plan that this is how we will replace members of that committee going forward. I just feel like right now we're talking about it in such a way that it still. Needs to be. Us. Just at least ha- having a guiding hand and being the hand that says, okay, go. Do it.
What's in order to that, let's come back to the whole board.
Hmm.
In order. Have. This group come back to, you know, have somebody say, okay, do it, and have to come back to the whole board and make that decision. So we can, can. Bigger and bigger.
You mean to add more members?
No, but you said. You know, the board goes basically oversee it a little bit. Correct?
I just, just in the, not even the day-to-day, not in the implementation of any of those things, because most of them, a lot of them don't have anything to do with our board. I'm just saying, when it comes to the construction of it, the constitution of it. Um, we want to see people who are familiar with the master plan or not familiar with the master plan. We're basically making that hiring decision, right? Do we want to be making that decision or are we gonna hand it over to the select board? Because that's the. That's the flip side, right? If it's its own independent committee. That's who appoints it.
Yeah, I mean, though I'm, I'm not sure you can't. I don't think there's any reason why you can't. Set up a committee. In town that is appointed by the planning board. Right, just as you have some that are pointed by the moderators, just some that are pointed by the select board, some are elected, I mean, I think you. Have the ability.
I suppose you could, but if we don't know the answer to these questions, or if it's going to be a convoluted annual town meeting type process. We're talking about wanting to approve this master plan and have it get going. I don't. Know that we want to wait for that. Lengthy of a process, if that's the type of process it's gonna take to get. It. Off the ground and constituted in that way. We want it to get going. I think we institute, we start it as a subcommittee and if it gets, if we. Have a way to, to move it forward in a different manner, that's. Makes it more independent. Okay. I just don't want to be waiting on it. As we figure it out.
You started as a subcommittee, can we move it through a committee in a short period of time?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, we could start it as a subcommittee. Well, it's got to get approved by the select board, right, then. Vote it out by us to constitute it, right, but we can start a select committee. Or subcommittee. Within a month.
Right, and that turnaround to me seems more reasonable. Than. Pushing it out. And then going forward, you know, we could, it could set up initially as five people and then all of a sudden two of the public members. Never show up and do anything. What's the process then after that? And who's in charge of refilling the committee and? Where are we pulling that from? Just.
No, I mean, you could, but you could put something on the next town meeting. To set up an independent committee, and you could do it that quickly if you wanted to.
If something falls apart right after the, the town meeting, we have to wait till the following town meeting to get it going again?
It's like. No, I mean, you just have to, it's, it's. Well, it's the same thing that Diane and the select board have to deal with all the time, which is, I mean, you have these. You have committees. And boards that people want to be on, that they give their time to. And then you have other ones which aren't as sought after and you end up with a bunch of openings. And, you know, people who aren't showing up as much, I mean, it's just, there's a, there's a, you have both. And then. If someone just, if you have empty spots. You just gotta fill them and presumably this will have enough interest to get filled reasonably quickly. The problem is, is when you have people. Who are appointed. And then are not doing the job, that gets a little trickier, right? Um, but. Diane, did you have anything to?
I just wanted to throw in, I just wrote the board and commission handbook and validated this fact that the select board. Has the authority to create and add lock committee. At any time, doesn't mean town meeting, and it can have an indeterminate term. And appoint those members. But those are the needs to vote and count me.
Yeah, but I don't, again, I. I think I. I think I see this board as. Having more of a planning aspect, you know, aspect to it. And so if anybody's gonna point it, it would be the. But I also think that. My, this, I, I've always with a subcommittee and with this. Would very much like to have a hands-off. From the planning board and have it to be independent and do their own thing.
But letting work member can be a designated.
Correct, no, I think that that's, I think that's actually useful to have people who have the experience. And understand how things are working. With the resident members, with the resident members outnumbering them, I think to provide. A check and balance there, but um. But I do. You know, I do think, I mean, I do think Jessica's right in that setting it up as a subcommittee, at least initially. Is the way to go so that you have something operating within a short period of time and you can kind of go forward from that. The question then in my mind is how long? Do you let it, do you try to do something? Now and put it on the town. Meeting in May, or do you? Give this a year to kind of see how it plays out and then try to put it on? I just don't want it to go on being a subcommittee. Unless there's some change that.
Give it a year or so to operate and see if major changes need to be made before it is. Put forward as a permanent committee that. Because the idea would be that come twenty years from now, there'll be another master plan done and another implementation committee having to be appointed. But.
The same implementation committee is gonna be running for quite a while, I mean, not necessarily with the same membership time, it's, I suspect people are gonna come and go, but.
I mean, I think it should be a permanent. Things set up between now and the fall meeting would be.
Well, it's, yeah, you're, I mean, I mean, we've had.
So you start now.
Had a bunch recently, but it's not, it's not always the case.
But then you still have the May meeting to fall back on.
Yeah.
Well, you start, start now, uh, appointing up for the planning board, working as a subcommittee. Now you can go toward the, toward the May meeting to see if it's working and then go, if not, let it keep going until the fall and then everything's straightened out, then go.
So. If we go with the idea that we're gonna initially start it as a subcommittee. Maybe it changes, maybe it doesn't change how you think, but. Um, are we looking at, are we still thinking five members? Is the correct number?
Yes.
Are we still thinking that? Three residents. Select board and planning board is the way to constitute it?
Mm-hmm. Yes.
You said, if you need to go to seven, you can. You will still have that ability to add two more.
But could the committee have a, could the subcommittee have a subcommittee?
Uh, I. Don't see why not, but I don't know the answer to that.
No, you could.
I mean, you also don't need a, you don't need. The sort of digitized people, you can have people just show up to meetings and offer their ideas, they can not get a vote, but they can utilize their results. Yeah, right, I mean, um.
Don't get a bad story, then.
All right, so. I guess the. Plan would be, and we can run on it, but the plan would be to send. Something to the select board to have them authorize the. Establishment of a. Master plan implementation committee or master plan implementation subcommittee of planning board. With three resident members and. A, a member from the select board and a member from the planning board. Um. To be, to be designated by each of those boards. Um, and we would be appointing the resident members. And with the idea that we're going to. Get it up and going and then sort of see whether any changes need to be made to the constitution of it.
You're so sufficient.
With the, and, and then again with the idea that it. With the, and and then again with the idea that it. Hopefully the goal being to move on to a independent, they established.
That sounds good. Sound good, Jess?
Sounds good.
Okay.
Do I make a comment?
Of course.
Marcus Phelps, Twenty Eight People Street. Uh, I think the other part that would be helpful is your. Ideas as to what the committee should be doing. Uh, in my mind, I think it's sort of a monitoring group. They may not do any specific actions. All the activities, you know, in the master plan have a lead party. So I think that that committee would be staying in touch with those lead parties. To make sure that things are moving along and possibly be the group responsible. For preparing an annual status report. To let the town citizens know. What has happened with the implementation of the master plan and to see if there's any need. For grants or whatever, but those lead parties. I think, and unfortunately or fortunately, planning board is a big piece in those. And lead parties at Norm Cheever organized that all into a chart or whatever and uh. So all those committees and boards can see where they are in the scheme of things. So I don't know if that is what your vision is. With Mr. Spina, who's gonna be representing the planning board on that.
I guess I would, I think in my head. It is potentially slightly broader than that in that. I think that the implementation committee. Would. Prioritize. Recommendations from the master plan. Um, and to the extent. That they can or that it makes. Um, efficient sense to do so. Draft up. Whether it's proposed bylaws or propose something, right, to submit to. The, the primary committee or board. To get that process going, right? They can kind of do some of the legwork, some of the um, work up for those recommendations. And get it to the board in a. Actionable. Way, right? That's why, I mean, I think it's in my mind a little bit broader, but but effectively, yes, they're, they're sort of just. The fire under the butts of the boards.
And they vary by the capability of each board or commission. I think some of the boards and commissions have already started working on implementing.
Oh, agreed.
You know, like conservation and agriculture. There may be others that are a little uncertain as to where they want to go.
No, and I, you know, to some degree look at it selfishly and in the sense that. We have limited time to be. Doing the proactive stuff and so using, using them to sort of. You know, help prioritize stuff, help do some of the legwork on some of that and give it to us. Is a lot easier uh, for us, given everything that's usually on our agendas, so we can find room in the agendas. But doing some of that legwork becomes difficult at times. So, um. All right, um. So John, uh, well, let's do a. Um, I guess we'll do a vote just to. Um. I don't want to repeat the whole thing, but. Um, you know, a motion to send to the select board for the formation of a master plan implementation subcommittee. Uh. With three resident members to be appointed by the planning board. Select board member to be. Um, designated by the select board and a planning board member to be designated by the planning board.
Dave's been a so moved.
You're close to me second.
Your roll call vote, Michael Doherty, aye.
Dave's been a aye.
You're close to me aye, David Sutton, aye.
Jessica Thor, aye.
Okay. All right, that's awesome. Um. Housing production plan. For twenty minutes. All right. Okay, so everybody's had a chance to look through this housing production plan.
I wasn't here last week.
I was there, I don't worry.
You didn't get one.
Don't buy my names. Don't worry, it was agenda item from uh, from a month ago.
Um. Get that for copy.
Everybody knows that.
Look in your research.
I'm sorry, you really don't have any of those?
No, it's not in my home. It may have been, did you sell it? We're not taking yours now. It might.
Okay.
You could cheat notes in here?
No, not so I just stopped him. Um.
That's the moment in that direction.
All right, so. Um, we need to. One is we need to thank Marcus for getting this thing done and getting it on from, you know, up in the air and moving. Um, he's the one who got, you know, but John, they worked together to get the grant for this, um. It's got produced sort of. Same time as the master plan is being done, incorporates a lot of the master plan. Or one or the other, right? And they both have the same ultimate recommendations, um. But this is. Um, you know, the forty B component of. Uh, the housing plant. Um, we have to. Review and. Um, make changes if we need to and approve it. Send it down to the select board. Does the same thing and then it gets on to um. The Commonwealth. For. I don't know if they do approval or just to have. It doesn't, it needs to be certified at some point if you have a sufficient amount of. Right? If you have the sufficient housing, affordable housing, they've got certified.
You ask a good question. No, we are not approaching that threshold, I don't know.
Fair enough.
I can say the draft were reviewed at the state. What we will compute this and.
Okay.
Checking out the necessary box.
All right, I think at some point they have to do something, I just don't remember and we are nowhere near it, so it's not. Uh, yeah. Okay. Um. Yeah, so they just approved, okay, so here it is, it's actually on page. Something, I don't have page. Um. There you go, so if you keep going down one through. Five there. So one has been done. Uh, one and two. That's what this plan is, three. Um. Adopted by, so we have to adopt it, select board has adopted, it's submitted to the state. And approved by the state. Um. The next part is where we're, it's not gonna happen in ten seconds, but. Uh, you, yeah, there is a certification you can get. I had a vague memory of that, okay? So, um. So let's go through this, because we have a little bit of time here, um. Not getting to the master plan until eight. Um, first, anybody who did have an opportunity to go through this, anything that they want to. Uh, offer suggested changes, anything of that.
Add a couple more, maybe just questions, I think, um, and just to make sure that I understand it and make sure somebody who's gonna read it. So in paragraph one point two. So I get that the, they say that the goal is that ten percent of our housing stock has to be, was considered. Affordable for folks who are at eighty percent of the area median income. And then at the bottom of that paragraph, it says three points, four percent of the town's housing units are on the subsidized housing inventory. It, I, it's not clear that that's the same criteria. And assuming that it isn't. What is the percentage that's uh, that meet the affordability for eighty percent of the AMI? Do you know that? Um, that's the correct, because that's actually what we're driving for. The fact that we have three point four percent subsidized is interesting. But I don't think it's really germane to what the requirement is, I don't think, unless I'm misinterpreting it.
I, I could be wrong and if we can look, it probably goes in greater depth in the master plan. Um. I think they're essentially the same. I think the, I think the delta is so big between housing costs and. Um, that eighty percent that it is effectively, uh, is pretty similar as a number.
Uh, yeah, possibly, yeah. If it is, that's fine too, but I think it should maybe, maybe the wording can be clarified a little bit to say. Instead of three point four percent of towns are in the subsidized inventory that. If, if it is one same thing, subsidized and therefore these are the ones that meet the. Eighty percent of the AMI threshold. If that's.
Yeah, I mean, um. And I'm trying to think. Right, so actually I think it's probably the same. Because it, what it's saying, it's saying under forty B. Right, so under forty B, meaning that it's gonna be the subsidized. It's gonna be, I, I don't know, I gotta think about that. Uh, but that's a fair point and we can kind of. Um. We may be able to turn to the master plan to see what, how it's written there. Um. I mean, I suppose you could have an affordable. Unit without a subsidy.
Yeah, as long as it's.
But the odds of that happening and.
Yeah, I don't know, I mean, the calculation from what I gather is, okay, you've got eighty percent of the AMI and then at that number then. Thirty percent of, I assume that's gross income can go toward housing, that's, that's what's considered affordable. So if I'm doing the math right, family of four, it's like just a scosh under two thousand dollars a month. Mortgage taxes and what else is included in that. If I'm doing the math right. What are you using for numbers again? I'm using on the table on page five, just for the family of four, it said they, let's see. The eighty percent of AMI low income is seventy nine thousand, seven hundred dollars. And then somewhere else here I saw there it says, okay, thirty percent of your income could go towards housing, that's considered affordable. I did the math, I said thirty percent of seventy nine seven is. Just a scosh o- under twenty four thousand dollars divided by twelve.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, the, um. What, um. Where I'm getting hung up. One point three, the defining affordable housing. Um. But yeah, right where you were, uh, that part and fold right below that table. Yeah, it's actually sitting right on the screen, but I actually looked up at it. Um. Usually refers to housing that is reserved. For households with incomes at or below eighty percent of the area median, right, so.
Okay, so not just that the houses.
Correct.
But it's actually designated as.
Correct, right, and that's where I'm trying to figure out whether, that I was talking about is driving from forty B. Which is usually. Subsidized. Um, I don't know. Yeah, I, I don't, I guess I don't know the answer, but it seems like it's, if it's not. Identical, it's pretty damn close, right? Uh, because you're not necessarily. Having something that costs that much, A, and then B, if you do reserving it only for, you know, income limitations. I'm not even sure you. But, you know, uh, but probably doesn't exist. So. Um. Yeah, yes.
Think it was in this document, it's not, it was in some papers in the state that that subsidized housing doesn't count towards. The required number in your housing.
Um, that's not true. That can't be true. I mean, the only subsidized. The, the only affordable housing we have. Is the subsidized housing itself, I think.
I, that's kind of what drove my questions, I was trying to think if that was, I'm trying to imagine, you know, okay. Particular house, taxes or whatever they are, mortgage, I don't know, how do you figure out how much of the mortgage, you know, is it? You assume an eighty percent of the value mortgage or, I don't know what. What interest rate do you assume? I don't know, I started going down a rabbit hole here of trying to figure out. You know, how do you figure out?
Property.
Yeah.
But there are subsidized. Housing units that are owned by even property owners receiving the subsidy from the government.
Yeah.
Those do not count in states. Numbers.
Like chapter eight housing, is that where you're like? Um.
And I, and I might have been talking to Ken coming here about this.
Okay, so, okay, so you're not talking about the. Housing authority managed properties which are effectively subsidized housing. But they're not independently. They're not privately owned, independent, you know, and subsidized. Those count toward the number.
Yes, it is.
But the sort of. And I'm using terms that I call each trillion, because I don't know exactly what they refer to, but what I've always understood to be sort of chapter eight. You know, housing, subsidized housing, right?
Section eight housing vouchers can be utilized in homes that are not necessarily. Under the AMI. Like, that's why they say not to utilize your section eight numbers as a guide for whether or not something is considered affordable.
Right, so you, so you have that, um, I don't know if. Well. Recently I've learned that the VA and HUD have a program, I don't know if that falls under that same. Uh, section or not, uh, but there are some other ways subsidized, you know, private properties um, offered by private owners and. Uh, so what you're saying is you understand that. Concept is not considered.
Necessarily know.
Correct, because you would never, you.
How many private people are accepting those vouchers, so we can't. We don't know that number, we can't call that our unit.
Yeah, we wouldn't know it, the Commonwealth would know it, they would have.
I own the house in Chigbee, the section eight, and we just got our, our check from HUD every month and nobody else has any question about it.
No, that's what I'm saying, there's, I assume that the Commonwealth has a list from HUD that says. You know, what exists, but, but I just don't, if you're saying that that doesn't count toward the subsidized, that kind of makes sense in my head. That seems like a. Nightmare to try to. You know, um.
And that can come and go where it is.
Correct.
We have the mandated number, that's it.
Correct.
It's a known.
Correct, and there's no, there's no, uh. Just because something is rented with a section, I, I want to keep calling it chapter eight, but it's section eight, um. Uh, voucher doesn't mean that it has to be going forward.
Right, because we had our place. As persons, I was just sold off.
Right, so that makes sense, all right, so. Um. So. So. Yeah, I guess they are two different. I guess I don't know if they're being used in two different ways, but they are probably two different terms, right? Uh, subsidized could. Not. This portion of subsidized housing is not going to count toward.
Right.
Um, that forty B percentage. Okay. Well, uh, so.
There's some opportunity to clarify.
Yeah, I, um. I mean, if he has the number. It was, I'm assuming it's coming from ten. And whoever he's talking to in Southwick, I assume that that is just referring to. The. Non-included section eight stuff. So maybe that's the wrong word to use. But I haven't, or it should be. Probably a boredom.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's. All right, well, we can talk about.
Yep.
Anything else?
Um, one other is more of a. Opportunity, I think, than, um, like I'm trying to find it. There's a couple of maps. One which, if I recall, showed and printed off properly, um. Developable land. And the other one shows, I think, based and shows areas that are not developed because it's on a floodplain or it's permanent protected or whatever. And the other one that showed. Yeah, yeah. One that showed. Not the zoning.
So there's a vacant, there's a.
Vacant.
Environment constraints for development and then.
Yes, and a vacant, and it would be nice to have a merging of those two so we could find out. Which vacant plots are actually developed? Right? Because I'm assuming that some of those vacant plots may be in a floodplain, for example. And that develop.
Well, that's easy enough to do because that's just.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's right.
I think so.
Right, this is coming from PB PC. But these are essentially, John, if I'm right, it's just a GIS. Looking the right. Box and you can put both of those as layers on. Right, on that.
And you'll find out subtract out, say, for example, the vacant lot that's in a floodplain or in a permanently protected space. Therefore, we don't really care about developing that as part of the housing production plan, right?
I mean, you still gotta.
More like a lot of bushes, maybe.
Yes, it's. It's still an overview map and not. You're not getting into the weeds of. Property by property, right? You still have to dig down in GIS to. To see the individual property and how they play out with their constraints, but. Yeah, I think you could generate a map like that that basically has both those things together.
Yeah, and then we could. You know, future readers and users of this plan could then focus on the vacant lots that are in developable areas.
Yeah, with the with the caveat that you're gonna have to. Sort of confirm, right? This is just.
Yes.
Take over.
Right, yeah.
Okay, yeah. Okay. Um, anything else?
Nope, that's me.
Jessica, was there anything? You have?
Um, I would second Dave's suggestion in regards to trying to blend those two maps to make it a little bit. Um, easier to see what it is out there that we are looking at. Um, because then it would be a matter of taking that map and then relaying it in comparison to our open space. Maps and what we are looking to preserve, um. And not necessarily to give, you know, to give an easy answer to a developer, but more so for ourselves that when it comes to. Making adjustments to our bylaws, um. To meet the goals of the housing production plan and the goals of the master plan, it seems like. You know, it's like we're not going to have a lot of developable area on the east side of town. That's going to be able to connect to our existing sewer and water. Facilities. So what does that mean if we want to make affordable housing development possible in the R forty on the western side of town and what? Um. What sort of changes we might need to look at in order to make that possible in the future? Because right now are. You wouldn't be able to do that. Um. So I just, I think that would be good for us as well going forward to have that information. And to try to, you know, there's a lot of aspiration in this plan, but. How do we take it practically and going forward in a productive way that we can help it? That's it. But otherwise, it's good.
Okay, so the only thing that I just didn't go back to a lot, but, um. Do we still have overlay? Obviously, the wet, the wellhead, I understand that. Is there still a flex res? Overlay and adult entertainment overlay or are they just? It's only permitted in these districts.
It's qualified as an overlay district, but it's permitted in the R forty, R twenty, R two A, R twenty B. When it comes to the F R D district.
But it's considered an overlay.
It is that the wellhead, adult entertainment district and the flood hazard and wetlands district are all considered overlays.
And then we talked about this before, John, but I didn't get a chance to go and compare them, but. The, um. Sort of strategy section of here. Is. Effectively consistent with the master plan. Strategies as well.
Generally speaking.
Yes. Okay. Now. What is gonna be the use of this document?
Information contained in the document should guide. Strategic efforts. To, I suppose, ultimately implement. Additional. Um. Housing that can be qualified towards that percentage of affordable housing units in town. So I suppose the, to borrow, I think, Jessica's term from a moment ago, the aspirational content is to say we. Meet or exceed that ten percent threshold. That is probably a little bit, um. Negulous of an answer. Maybe what's the, what is, what's the tool at the, uh, of, of, what's the usage, use of having this plan?
No, I'm just trying to think of, um. What I don't want is the plan to just. Sit. And, you know, I mean, that's not. What it does now, but, you know, you know, it's posted online. It'll just sit there, right? It's not. I don't, I don't, someone's got a. I mean, the way I understand it is, is. Again. Not that we're anywhere near certification, but if that is the goal. This is effectively a five-year document, right? It expires after five years. So it's something that needs to be sort of looked at and moved along. You know, with some. I mean, it's probably not going to happen, but 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 at least. Attempted to be moved along with it. Because it's only a five-year document. I mean, you can have another document in five years, but it's still a five-year document. So, um. I'm just trying to think of. I mean, I guess it falls under us, right? I mean, I guess it falls under. Someone, we gotta, we gotta keep an eye on it. It's not necessarily the housing authority that's gonna keep. Right, so we'll send.
I think your conclusions are reasonable, uh, the way that the towns, uh. Boards and committees are structured. The. Was the most likely. Party to carry elements along. Elements of this, um. Document along would be.
And I suppose it goes like other. Um. Documents like this, I mean, the open space and whatever else will go to the master plan implementation. The extent is not necessarily in the master plan. Or it it expands on what's in the master plan and to be used as a guide for. For that, I suppose. Okay.
Could I speak? Uh, in the housing chapter. Of the master plan, it does refer to the housing authority. Identify a location for additional public housing. And seek project of food and funding. And. I don't know if it's still in the housing production plan, but there's some specific locations. That. Were identified. And I hopefully you're gonna look at those and see if they're reasonable. Uh. And some of them were based on where the housing authority has land currently. And potential for. Using it to implement this action. And also, there's some apartment area. In southwest that has potential for expansion. But somebody, I don't know, it's a select board. Or a planning board would have to reach out to the owner. And see if they have within their vision. To, uh, build any more apartments. And whether or not they would be. Able to include for, you know, some of the, make some of the units affordable or have them for. And there's, you know, a couple other specific properties. There's one down on Plank Grove Road. That's adjacent to, I think it's Lakeside Apartments. There's a pretty good size. Complex in there right before you cross into Connecticut. And, uh. That may be. An undesirable location now because looking at it, maybe concentrating. Too much apartment type. Housing in one area of town. The advantage is that is serviced by sewers and public water, so. The land has. The, uh, infrastructure. Available. So, anyway. Just a little thought there. I think the housing authority should, you know, would be a player.
Well, absolutely. I just, I think. Um. Think we also have to have some oversight of it as well, pay attention to it. Uh, I did find. Um, it never really stuck with me when I read it the first time, apparently, um, an answer to exactly what Diane just said. Which is that, um. Section eight housing markers typically are tied to an individual and not to a unit. For this reason, the unit. Having to buy an individual with a section eight housing brochure does not count toward the town subsidized housing inventory. This information is presented in the section because it is a common misunderstanding that these units count as subsidized housing units. So that is in there. That's probably where you read it. Much better memory than me, um, okay. Um. So. Anybody have anything else for this plan? Okay, um. Well, why don't we do this, um? Let's see if we can reach those maps. I think the language is right in that paragraph you were talking about when you read later on, what I just read. But we can figure that out too.
You know, save saving or two clarity would probably.
No, understood, um. And it's, it's like, it's defined later on. And then we can give. Dick and. Uh, Dave, if you guys. Um, you know, take a look at food stuff. Before the next meeting and you see stuff, you can certainly bring it up at the next meeting and do it one last time, then we'll. Vote on it at the next meeting. And you'll be blown. Okay, all right. Yeah, so that's our discussion. So now we can go. Actually, it wasn't too bad. Eight o'clock.
Uh, seven forty-five, forty-five.
Oh, damn it.
Seven, well, we'll be there soon enough. Seven forty-five, two fifty college containing public here.
We have a. Request from Nina Fazio of Parlor Record Associates. To continue the meeting to. February sixth.
Okay. We're gonna do this one a little bit better. Um. Do I hear a motion to continue two fifty college highway? To. Seven twenty P M on February sixth.
Dave Spina so moved.
Take a second.
Dave Spina, I.
Jessica Sorkin, I.
All right. Eight P M. Um. Continue review and discussion of the master plan. No, no, that's fine. Do you have a other hard copy sitting there? You know, that's fine. I can pull up on my phone. Okay, I just took the wrong card, babe, so. Pro is I got Jelly Ranchers, but mine is that I don't have the housing or the master plan.
No, with the master plan, I didn't have the housing. Mike, you want ice? Mike. I was on with Dave.
No, no, I can just bring it up on my phone. That's fine.
Sure.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, 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 it's not a problem. I just had to know.
You would so so nice love to use yours.
I don't mind, but, um. I don't mind bringing that on my phone.
Want my glasses? It'll get bigger.
Thankfully, not yet. Okay. We've gotten halfway through, right? We've gotten through the. Historic cultural resources. Am I right in that?
Yes.
People look at this at some point, but the people who did the photographs got credited, right?
Do this, so.
All right, so did Jason do a bunch of them? He did all some, okay. All right, now I just want to make sure I add that on my list of things to go back and. Um, all right. So, um, I guess let me just open it up, we can go through it. Um, but open space, natural resources, was there anything in particular that um, board members wanted to bring up and discuss? Okay.
Wait, wait, go on. Page eighty-three.
Too late, too late.
Twenty years too late.
Um, eight, uh, eighty-three, you said?
My, either her.
Yep.
With eighty-three, do you have this?
We're not.
It should be the correct one, I would hope. Um, let's see there, much of the I R industrial zone, do we want that to read correctly, industrial restricted zone?
Yes.
Yep.
Yes.
Anything else, Jessica, or no, you good? Okay.
John, were you gonna mention my comments on, uh, page ninety-five?
Marcus, since you have momentum and if you have the source in front of you, and if you don't mind, Mr. Chair, I'll invite him to do so, so I don't book it, I'll leave after.
Marcus can absolutely add alpha comments whatever he wishes.
Looking through this, uh, the bottom of ninety-five, action two point six. Establish a beautification and wellness commission. If you look back at page seventy-three, under a different chapter, there is an action that calls for the establishment of a beautification commission. So I'm thinking they're the same. What? Um, I was not on either of those work parties that did it, I just happened to see that when I was reading through it. And on page seventy-three, it's action one thing one one. Uh, lead party there, it was planning board and the lead party on the page, um, is here. It's all good. The lead party is the same, so they believe it. I guess it's, it actually works out okay with the lead party being.
Yeah, as long as it's not opposing somehow, okay.
It's not like the confirmation condition. At one, and the guys have the other.
Yeah, yeah.
But whatever.
Now, is, is that for evenifying public land? Or private land?
I think it's.
I think it's both.
It's both.
So, is, is commissioning come to your house and tell you I don't like your shrubs?
Well, no, I mean, so.
No.
Well, first of all, we've already had one. I don't know anything about it other than we had one, because I remember Raj referring to it as pretty committee.
Yep.
Um, and, uh, you know, I think that they were putting forth initiatives and going to private business owners, asking them to do so, right? I mean, we also have to be fair, guidelines about that area on College Highway that we use, but I mean, I think they, they were, they were trying to, you know, one of their initiatives was to sort of, you know, where and how they were doing it, I suppose I don't know, but asking, giving incentives, whatever it is, to get things, you know, treated up.
Exactly, like, we'll pay you to change your shelves if you choose.
No, I think it may be, it may be, you know, um,
I, I.
benches, right?
Because I read that, the first thing that stuck out was turning in the town into an H O A.
No, 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 but it may be.
That's that, I'm, I'm just saying, that's, it's the first thing that shot in my head.
No, but you don't have that ability. I mean, I think it's more probably things like, well, if you wanted, if you thought that having benches along College Highway, so people, you know, were walking around there, could sit down or do whatever, you talk to the private owners and you say, okay, if we have this bench, we purchase this bench, would you be willing to, you know, actually, can we put it here? You know, that, or some, you know, things like that, I don't know, I mean, I think there's a lot of ways you can go, but I don't think it is ever going to be.
Okay, yeah, so this is, this is a voluntary thing, this isn't gonna be any kind of power behind and says.
To the extent that it's private land, yes. Public land is a different story, obviously, but, you know.
Public land, you can get the, yeah, that's a little different.
Right, for private land, it's more initiatives and recommendations and requests, uh, again, I think the guidelines have some impact on. But.
I love that, we don't people stopping by.
Yeah, I mean, we're gonna focus, uh, around your neighborhood.
You'll make my wife happy, but be angry. Stop that. You're working for the town, you're next, probably have to do it.
Uh, yeah, no, I think that's, I mean, I, I think that's sort of the way it played out, but I, again, I wasn't around for it, so I don't know it well enough, but I think that that's the idea behind it. Right, I mean, if you wanted, you can make recommendations, try to get the, you know, a bunch of business owners in a row to sort of go along with it. But I'm not sure how much uh, of a you can give the carrots, but I'm not sure you have the stick necessarily. So. Doesn't mean that it's not a useful thing to have, I mean, I think it is, one is one more step in trying to, you know, that's why we have those guidelines for College Highway, right, is to have, uh, have some control over the way that area looks. I mean, I think this is one more step in trying to do that.
I was on the planning board when that whole thing came through, when it started, when it was written, and there were some dangerous items that were removed from that before it became what it actually was. And it was getting to the point where they pretty much wanted to take the whole town, tear it down and flip it around. Um, but in, in, there was also talk about you would have to if you bought this property. Um, that, that, that kind of control there, kind of.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm not sure I, I don't think there's any right to do that, so I don't know how we would ever get there, right? I mean, I just, if you actually just boil it down to legality, I'm not sure there's any rights to do it, we don't have it set up that way, it's not Simsberry. Right, or, you know, a Cape Town, where you can have some control over that kind of thing, I just, it doesn't exist.
Right.
So, um, I think it's, I think it's gonna be in the form of recommendations, incentives, that kind of thing. For that, for the private. All right. Um, uh, do you have more, Marcus?
No.
Okay.
Can I, can we? Sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
Can we look at, um, page eighty-seven real quick? Um, the first real paragraph there. It's talking about what people wanted to see for development in the survey, kind of in the middle of the paragraph, it asks, um, the feeling over the next twenty years, which was similarly reflected with the majority answer for the question of over the next twenty years, where would you like to see new housing built? Being that near fifty percent would like to see minimal residential development. Um, and there's no answer to the question of where would you like to see new housing built? And I didn't know if I was, it was just a I'm not reading that right, or if we just never got an answer other than we don't want to see residential development.
No, it's saying that, um, I mean, to me, it's margin of error, but it's basically saying that the fact that fifty-five point five percent um, or no, forty-nine point five percent would like to see minimal. Uh, hold on, let me just read this the right way.
There we go.
Right, yeah.
Mm-hmm. Um, I think that oh, it's a majority answer, meaning because there's more than two answers. Right, so.
Right, no, no, so I'm not asked, I, what I'm, what I, my question, the question is, is over the next twenty years, where would you like to see new housing built? And the, the sentence is telling us the answer to that was would like to see minimal residential development, so the, the question proposed in the beginning of the paragraph is not answered by that sentence, so it's just, it's reading kind of funny to me.
Well.
If you read that, if you read that paragraph from start to that point.
I think one of the answers, yeah, I'm trying to think back to to where would you like to see it built was I wouldn't, right, I, I, I wanna see minimal residential development, I think that was one of the answers.
Yep.
Is that a rhetorical question?
And so forty-nine and a half, half percent chose that answer to that question versus, you know, the other answers, I, I presume, and I don't know off the top of my head, but were probably you know, certain areas of town or certain districts or you know, something like that.
It's probably right.
Uh, or right, there, there might be a right in one.
Oh, maybe, but I mean. Might have been.
So.
Okay.
I mean, I, I, you're right, in the sense that if you ask where and they say minimal development, it's, it's not necessarily an answer, but I, I think that that's I suspect that that was one of the choices or maybe written in or something, I don't know. Um, I mean, if it's, if it is what it is, I don't know what else you can do about it, right?
No, it's, I just, if the question is where, and the answer is nowhere, let's just be clear that that's the well, the majority answer for the question was nowhere, like, okay, well, that, that aligns perfectly with that housing production plan we're gonna approve for next week, so. Yeah. Just curious.
Yeah.
Pointing it out.
There is the, yes, although that's the that is the problem.
Yeah.
Um, all right. Yeah, and we can go back and just look and make sure, maybe phrase that differently, I mean, I do understand what you're saying, yeah.
Yeah, it doesn't, it should be answered in that question.
I think we could check the survey, I think, and it might be. Is it in the back?
Yeah, I just.
There is a bullet about it on the same page as three hours. And the middle, middle one is uh, that question. But Jessica is right. The question that's asked in the paragraph is not by that statement. So go to the authors, who wrote it, John? I think it was Dave McWilliams and Marissa Overdon.
I believe so. Think so.
I hope.
Yeah, I think you're right.
My memory is not as good as it used to. Plus, Mr. Neam.
Yeah, well, let's go back and get the actual question and answer and how that plays out, because I just, I mean, I see the forty-nine point five percent said would like to see minimal residential development, but that's you just said, Marcus, that's in that session that kind of lists out a bunch of different answers, it doesn't necessarily tie it to questions. So let's just see, let's, let's data check that and make sure we're representing that correctly and clearly. Um, all right, anything else in that, uh, section?
Uh, page ninety-five. Page ninety-five, paragraph two point five. Creating dark skies by law, the first paragraph is fine. The second paragraph there gets a little, in my mind, overly prescriptive.
As, I was agreeing, gonna agree with you, Mr. Spina, who's gonna come to Home Depot with me and buy my new outdoor lighting fixtures to make sure I have dark?
Keep your house to make sure the existing ones are okay.
Right, yeah.
Yep, then, yeah.
Which is Dave, which is the where's the issue?
The issue is just the whole, the whole paragraph that starts with scope and apply, that's like.
I just wanna make sure with the whole thing and not.
Yeah.
Uh, all right. Uh, but again, I, I guess I guess, let me, first thing I'd say is gotta get rid of that, not self-creating dark skies by law, because.
Absolutely.
The second thing I gotta say. Is that again, I mean, I just, you, I think if you're putting in a bylaw in place for something like this, which is you know, for any kind of conservation purpose, there's probably two ways to do it, one is going prospectively and the other is offering incentives or whatever else to do it to existing properties, right? I mean, it doesn't, you're not I don't think any I don't know, I mean, I don't I guess you could read it that way that you could put in a bylaw in place which applies retrospectively. I don't know, that seems problematic to me from a legal standpoint, um, depending on what it may be, I mean, but at some point you do have to I don't necessarily have an issue with a a, a, a bylaw that provides timeframe for compliance for existing properties, right, over whatever it is, five, ten years, whatever it is, right? I mean, I, I don't have problems with those. I don't, but changing something to make it illegal, if you, if you wanna try to have a dark skies bylaw and make it somewhat effective in the next ten to fifteen years, the reality is you're going to have to figure out how you're going to impact the existing properties and what you're gonna do to get them to comply with it, because otherwise you're not, it's gonna be useless bylaw, because you're only gonna have X amount, a small percentage of new development or you know, uh, renovations that are going to fall under the bylaw. So for something like this, if you actually wanna have.
What's light pollution, is there?
Well, they're standards, they're absolutely, the International Dark Sky Association.
You put a big top full of somebody's house and see where it shines up? Do a flyby?
They, they rate fixtures.
Oh, yeah, yeah. No, and I mean, I just, I think I don't know, and maybe you guys disagree with me, that's fine, but I just, I think in these types of situations, when you're talking about environmental or conservation type initiatives, you, you gotta set a goal and then the, the thing that hinders that goal is that there's existing things that have to change, right, and so you don't make it illegal that day and say, everybody, you gotta go change on you know, this day or the next day, but you say over the next five years, ten years, whatever, you move toward getting this, and maybe you put in incentives, or maybe you do this, or maybe do that, but I, I don't, you're not going to ever get there.
Where does all this incentive come from? Who, 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 where do we get the money for the incentive, right, so we can collect money, so we can come make you change your lights?
Again, I, but
That happens now when mass save comes.
Correct.
And looks at your house and they replace all your lighting.
Oh, they tell you, they collect that from utility companies, gives them that.
That's volatile.
Come, if you look at your bill, you'll see where it really come from.
But again, it's, there's, there's we're sort of getting into a hypothetical that can't, I mean, there's a, a million different ways you can try to fund it.
So.
There may be grants, there may be whatever else from the Commonwealth to, to help you fund it, there may be this, there may be that, I don't know.
Where does the Commonwealth get the money?
Well, we're not.
They don't put that.
We're not gonna fix the world and all the money issues and where money comes from to pay for things while reviewing the twenty forty master plan. I, what I would, I would say that the problem that I can't hear what he's saying when I'm talking, um, I think what, part of what Dave Spina and I were getting to is that this reads as if the planning board is going to get behind a bylaw that does this, and I think that may be a bit of massaging here of just the scope and of The planning board is going to get behind a bylaw that does this, and I think that may be a bit of massaging here of just the scope and of. Applicability could make this a bit more palatable for us to say that, yeah. This is an aspirational goal that we would like Southwick to have darker skies in order to meet this purpose and that we will look to. Incentivizing the installation of this and retrofitting. But it may be to residential development, instead of having it read here that the planning board is getting behind a potential initiative. That's gonna say every resident in the town of Southwick has to change their outdoor lights within the next five or ten years. Right? We can find a way to kind of put the aspiration here without making it read, because right now it reads. This is the bylaw the the planning board's gonna make, and this is what they're gonna do.
I don't mind, so I guess I would say this, I don't mind massaging the language to make it. Broader or more vague, but. I don't necessarily agree that. The planning board should potentially do something like that. I I mean, that's a possibility, and if people wanna do it, it's on the table. I don't think this master plan is designed to. Be so narrow as to say this is what you need to do. It just needs to provide the ability of what you're trying, what your goals are.
Right.
And then it's up to the boards or whoever else to sort of figure out.
Agreed. And that's why I think the first paragraph does that aspirational, hey, here's what we're jogging to. The second gets too much into the how, I think.
And that scope and applicability portion of it, it kind of doesn't follow along with the other. Ones, two point three doesn't have a scope and app, so perhaps that was something like that was underlying thought process that maybe just needs to be. Removed. To some degree.
I I just, I think, I mean, maybe the sort of terminology, I was gonna go back and see if it's in. Other ones, and I just didn't really see it. Uh, cuz I don't remember seeing that scope and. Applicability elsewhere.
Right.
I think the languages, I think the tweak may be something as simple. As may apply.
Yeah.
And not applies to, right? I mean, applies to says that's what it's going to, I mean, it may apply or even should apply. I I don't. Or, you know, I I don't.
Could, one of those kind of words.
Yeah, I I, the only reason I'm saying I don't know whether it's may, could, or should is I don't know. The genesis of the recommendation and whether it is representing that. A majority of the town thought that this should, you know what I mean? I don't know. I assume it didn't get into that level of detail in.
There wasn't questions.
So. Um, it probably is a may or could and not a should, but, um. But I, I mean, like I said, if if it did get into that level of detail and that was a recommendation, then it's a should, but if it's not, then it's a may or could. I I, but. You know, I I don't. Yeah, that's fine. I mean, I'm not gonna, not gonna get into the debate here, cuz me and Sutton are gonna, you know, not agree, but I can tell you that.
A lot of things over the last ten years, buddy.
I see him driving his electric car down the street.
How was the starter to get my big diesel?
Um, all right, so yeah, I think we should probably, um, I mean, we can. Look a little, just look at the survey stuff to make sure, but I I suspect that the answer is just a change of that to could or may apply.
Yep.
Unless, unless it was specifically recommended. All right. Uh, anything else?
Hey, eighty-five beats per minute, Mike, that wasn't a debate. Look, it tells me.
There you go.
Uh, anything, uh, well, looking at mine, make sure I didn't miss anything that I wanted. Uh, anything from. Uh, public, public comments. Diane.
On the. Um, I think the main. What do you call the lead parties responsible, the uh? I think there, the intention was that they would be seeking grants and organizing events and such to. Obtain incentives for existing businesses to be putting up and things like that. Um, you could change that state voluntary to private. So vol, maybe voluntary. Participation.
That's a good word.
And on dark skies, um, we already have some lines, but it's a special permitting process on lighting. That is one of your. Uh, criteria that you look at. And again, that doesn't necessarily need to be a bylaw, it can be a recommendation. For economic development or. TW, some other order of commission. That can again seek voluntary incentives from organizations and again make them voluntary. To residents rather than take away their civil rights. And having everybody else pay for it.
See, I just.
And if you make it a bylaw, you're gonna have to have people vote on it, and they're not gonna vote on it, and you're gonna have wasted your time. And energy and money. You're not gonna sell people what people want for private. And it's a safety issue. If you don't have the right lighting in your, on your property, you're a target. And and I know this personally, I'm a target cuz I don't have the.
Yeah, they they could, they're more than welcome to try and use me as a target.
Voluntary has to be a. A thing anything we're talking about, people's personal property.
Wow, that's got hurting there, Mike. You are so looking for the right word. Can I help you?
Steve. Where the issue lies. Like, this is gonna be a fundamental disagreement, so we're not gonna accomplish anything. Is when you have. These shared problems, common problems. And how you address those, because. If it, it, if you just leave them to. Individuals to deal with and focus on civil liberties. You never get a solution to these shared problems because they are shared problems and not individual. Right? This is the, this is the idea behind environmental law and regulation, that, I mean, and even, there's a wide variety of. Situations where this comes up, but, you know, that's one example. This, to me, is that shared problem, right? I mean, if you don't do something. And you, the question is how far you go, but if you don't do something, no individual is going to necessarily. Do it themselves, because there's no incentive to do it themselves.
That's what I'm saying.
But it's a shared. Right, right. Correct, but then, uh, but then the next step is. You have to, to figure out how far you go, you have to figure out how important it is to the community itself, and maybe. Isn't, may, may very well be a bad example, because the dark skies is probably not. You know, one of the highest priorities of this, or to folks in Southwick, I don't know, but it may very well not be, but. You have to figure out how important that is. And then that sort of defines how far you go in trying to reach that goal with the, with the shared. Members of, you know, uh, who are, who have to take action to reach that.
Going back to the genesis of that statement, that recommendation. Nobody saw that being a specific question on the survey. And I don't recall it being brought up as an issue from the response of the, so I'm.
Is it part of our green communities to have any of that?
No.
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 I mean, let's, uh, but, but I I I don't. I guess I don't know the answer to that, but it strikes me of all the sort of. Wanna call them progressive, you can, but of of these types of initiatives. Dark skies in a rural community like Southwick doesn't seem that out of the.
Yeah.
Out of the scope of what Southwick folks would want, right? I mean, that doesn't seem too far.
It seems almost like a conservative position, one might argue. Throwing a little shade from at home, sorry, I'll quieten up now.
Um, so I mean, I just. Yeah, I just, this one doesn't seem like it's, uh, it seems like it's pretty consistent with, it may very well not have come up as a specific. Recommendation, it seems pretty consistent with the theme of the master plan, which is the sort of ruralness of the.
Yep.
Community. I don't know, again, I don't.
I think that little phrase in there would have a a lot less bite if you took the word bylaw out of it. If you just said, we'll give you, we'll give you incentives to do this on your own.
Uh, can you go back to what you have for a second?
Now you automatically throwing up a red flag, and now you're making me do something.
Not that's what everybody in Southwick wants. They want more government intervention. I have that wrong? Reading the room.
Forty-nine, forty-nine point five percent, Mike.
Let's see.
Call the dark skies initiative.
Sounds like a Avengers movie.
And then see who can.
Which I probably watch.
Yeah, I mean, I would just, I would be, again. This, I think it's a fair criticism that this recommendation probably got too specific and too. Commanding, authoritative, yeah. Um, I do think that, again, uh, it may very well be that there's a bylaw. Uh, because there's a need for a bylaw to at least provide some authority for whatever is being done, right?
We have, we have that in in our scope, and we put in any kind of commercial properties that we're making sure the lighting is how it should be going forward. He's not going back and making people change some stuff, and now you gotta come out of somebody's pocket.
I don't know, but I. Doesn't mean that it's wrong, but anyways. But I don't think you should necessarily take bylaw out as a possibility, right? Initiative and or bylaw, I think is. It's the way to do it. It doesn't lock it down into one thing, but it provides the broader scope.
Yeah.
So, okay.
Yep, all right.
Then then make the bylaw going forward, not retroactive.
That's a debate for a later day.
Till somebody forgets and then slide it back in again. It's like this one here, she just got through saying this information came out of nowhere to somebody who was on that committee who added it.
Well, but I don't, again, I don't.
Come out of the community.
No, 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 but.
I don't necessarily think that's true.
You're not, you can't go back and tie all these recommendations to specific questions that were on those surveys. Some of this is taking common sense and saying what exists and putting it into recommendations based on what the. Feel and in tenor of the, of the survey questions were, right? I mean, it's not. I I don't. I don't know, I mean, you're, you're using, like, I guess the example would be you're using. This idea that the majority of people or the the majority of answers wanted a more rural. Community, right? That very broad answer probably led to a bunch of specific.
I think there was some.
Or was a basis for a bunch of specific recommendations.
Already reestablished out of Pennsylvania. You talked about getting back to, there you go. There ain't no light up there shining in the sky.
All right. Uh, anything else? Who would have thought that the most discussion was beyond the open spaces?
It's not the light, it's, I think it's more of the the trigger is the fact that if somebody's trying to oppose their will and somebody else.
That's, that's where.
That's where it comes from.
Yes.
That's all I'm like.
I agree. I know where you're coming from. No, I know.
I mean, I'll make everybody say cock.
You should. I can't remember naming it, Wes Lemmister right here.
Lemmister, L E O M S T A.
All right. Um, anything else on this chapter before we move on to the next one? Okay.
Transportation, now we can talk about the cash.
This is the proper section for.
Proper section for cash. Where you gonna park it for that pocket?
All right.
Stop right there. Over the years, development in Southwick and surrounding communities, instead of surround communities.
That'll keep me up all night.
It does, I'm sorry, it's the English teacher in me, can't take it.
Introduction page, my practice. Right inside, second paragraph, Tom Murch, page one hundred.
Anybody have any other? Comments or questions on the transportation section?
On page one oh eight. There's kind, it's talking about rail trail parking. The first sentence, which has room for approximately thirty vehicles. Doesn't always have thirty vehicles.
I'm sorry, what's the recommendation?
To to either, it either should read a Long Mill Road, which has room for or space for approximately. Um, and then, I don't know if we. The, the tenor of that last sentence either needs to change and that. Residents previously had created makeshift parking spaces because both are no longer. Available to be used, so even though the last part of the sentence indicates that it was done on private property and without permission. The way it's currently reading is that residents still are doing it, so either. Removal or having it read residents previously had created.
All those are previously done.
I believe on that same page Sutton wanted to mandate electric vehicles.
Come on, share with the group, I missed it.
I said, I believe on the same page you wanted to mandate electric vehicles.
Oh, no.
But only if I refer to his cause.
Oh, my God. Oh, my God.
Anything else you all, most of your writing? Uh, anything else, uh, on the transportation section? Public services and facilities. If only we had the person in charge of a couple of facilities here. Anybody on board have any comments on the public? Services and facilities section.
Taking the fifth.
Under current conditions. Infrastructure, public water. Couple sentences in the town's water withdrawal permit caps the withdrawals. At one point zero two million. Two, one point zero two million gallons per day. There's some qualifier missing there. Yeah, I know. It's like it it knew it needed something. I just didn't know what. Um, and then towards the bottom, it's, we have in recent years, the water department. It says replaced section of the water main on College Highway at two different dates. It's, I don't know if we want it to read, it replaced a section of the water main on College Highway at two different times, or is it replaced sections? Of the water main on College Highway, so.
Section, because sections, I think. Section.
And then that, I'm sorry. On the same page, the third bullet on some key findings. Southwick has an aging population that makes up twenty-two percent. Instead of is made up of.
Um, anything else on this section? Page one twenty-one. Paragraph one point five. Talks in general about establishing a master plan implementation committee and. All kinds of stuff about implementing math plan. It's not specific to transportation. It seems like that whole paragraph should be.
Oh, sorry, wherever one we're at here, whichever one we're at, still. It seems like that should be. Either somewhere else, yes, upfront, it's more of a generic.
So we look on the PlayStation show.
That's a good one. Yeah, I thought the question becomes where you're put it, right? There's no reason, I mean. Either it goes everywhere or. Maybe it goes at the end of the executive summary or. Yeah, no, it's a. What is this chapter?
At the conclusion of the introduction.
Infrastructure.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't know, you know, I mean, this is public services and facilities, maybe it does. I mean, it's, you're you're making recommendations for the planning board to. Undertake or other boards undertake, maybe public services. It's, I don't know. I just don't know where it goes, right? Um, I mean, those are technically public services, but they're.
I think it's, uh, it's probably not. I think it's too general to sit in just a single paragraph, although I understand kind of, I guess I could wrap my head around some play of saying it's public services, but. But no, I mean, it's not, right? That's, that's. Either, uh, the end of the executive summary, end of the introduction, or. A completely new section, which everybody would love, which is really conclusions and recommendations.
Yeah, I mean, I guess let's think about it. We should, it should be put somewhere else, I think. They're just looking at it. It says a lot of mechanisms of policies linking the master plan, a staff board, a commission, work plans, budgets, accounting. Right? I mean, that's, that's, that's public services, um, but. I don't know the answer. All right, anything else in this section?
Mister Phelps, uh, actually hinted at that there's a. Duplicate action. Uh, I didn't want one. To establish. Uh, that appears, I think, would be open space. Uh, natural resources section that we.
All right, so it should probably be taken out of open space, like, well.
It's both by the same logic.
By that same logic.
Like, I suppose it does.
Yeah, I'm thinking as long as they're not inconsistent. Then that's probably okay, you know, fair feet, you know.
Fair enough. Same other one with a.
The only difference is the implement for the lead party. Oh, the one is the C A O, chief administrative officer. And on page ninety-seven. It's a select.
Oh, yeah, I should pick one.
But maybe at the end of your introduction, we have a general. Recommendations and actions. And those misfits. You can apply.
Multiple sections.
Yeah, not bad idea. No, but then you're.
If you still have an assigned party.
I'm not saying that's a bad idea. I'm just saying that's a lot of.
The general ones.
Figure out which ones are the sort of outlier general ones. And put those, I I. I think there may be a less labor intensive solution for that. It's not a bad idea. I just think it's labor, but.
With our Ken's, uh, expressions.
Um, yeah, I, yeah.
I think maybe it's going back to that duplication. Page one twenty, just move select. Cross out C A O, chief administrative officer. Just move select word up there is in part, and then it matches.
Uh, so I mean, I guess I would disagree only in the sense that I think the C A O is probably the lead party on that. Right? I'm not sure the select board is spending much time. You know, grant writers, I think that's the C A O function. But, but I mean, I agree with you that it has to be. Um, so, yeah, I mean, I think that I I think it has to be consistent. I just, I think it's probably a C A O. Lead party.
So you've been changing on nine seven.
Correct. And thank you for telling John the page. I mean, I, here's the, here's. So that master plan, right, implementation, maybe. So if you go to one eighteen, there is a section there. About. Issues and opportunities, what is maintaining the master plan. Right? I mean, it sort of works it into that. I don't know. I don't know if it's right. I'm just saying it's it's more. Than just taking one recommendation and moving it to, you know, three point seven of another one, right? Right? It's. Um, it is sort of. Derived from.
Right.
The beginning. So, uh, you know. I mean, I guess I'm also in point, as long as it's in there.
Yeah, they're not just gonna get there.
Um, and. Probably done before we. So, um, all right, uh, anything else on this section? Hearing nothing. I don't know. I assume this is just a typo and not something missing off, but on two point two. There's an extra count, there's a count after B P W. Soon that's just a typo and not something different after that, but. Everybody thinks it's. It's soon that pretty much. I, that to me seemed to cover everybody. Needed for sewer, uh, so I wasn't thinking. Any big connection for that. All right. Um. Climate change and sustainability. Anybody have any suggested changes or comments on this?
On page one twenty-eight. Says, given the Commonwealth of Massachusetts' climate policy legislation and former governor Baker's commitment. The underlined highlighted linkage there, is that? Actually linking to something or?
You know.
Actually, that's the way it does.
Charlie Baker's Wikipedia page. So you definitely must.
The link is broken? Well, it's not even. No, you just can't get there. It's still there. It's just you are not worthy.
All right, anything else in this section?
Sorry to have you go back to page one twenty-nine. The mass decarbonization roadmap. Insert box here. The final sentence is cut off. I don't. Know what it's supposed to say. It says local and regional partnerships to build stronger comma more.
Oh, yeah, probably just, yeah.
I don't know if it's, if it's there and just hidden by the size of the box or.
Uh, anything else? All right, um. I think. I guess let me just, uh, open it up to, is there anything? Besides, other than chapters that we just went through, that anybody has any comments or questions? Or concerns about before we. Sort of move on, get the changes incorporated at then, which kind of just through it and vote on it at the next meeting. Anything else?
Maybe the job.
All right. So why don't we? Continue this public hearing to seven thirty on February sixth.
Dave Spina still moved.
Jessica Thorpe and I.
Okay. Planning board member comments. Are we going to get any of those to the? All right, bearing none, now turn to Mister Sutton.
Make a motion to close the meeting.
Dave Spina second.
All those in favor? All right, have a good night.
Good night.